Call to order, City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1231, June 16, 2014. Let us stand for the pledge, please.
................................................... Go ahead, call the roll, please.
Burns.
Here.
Cottle.
Here.
Kirby.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lives.
Here.
All President accounted for, next item on the agenda is the minutes. You all received a copy of the minutes in your packet, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Item number three on the agenda is presentations, we have three presentations this evening, the first of which is a Business of the Month Award to Strength Incorporated, Mr. Brown.
Mayor members and council, thank you very much. This is an interesting project because our June 2014 Business of the Month is a new member of our Forest Park Business Community. Strength Inc. recently moved into the 690 Northland Office Building, bringing several workers to our city. The company provides professional property management services for small to midsize investors and ownership groups, all at a cost they can afford. These services include tenant recruitment, lease administration, property maintenance, remodeling, rehabilitation, and strategic planning. They place a premium on client satisfaction, their expert team strives to provide quality and affordable management services for all investors. Accepting the award tonight is James Dugan, Project Manager at the company. Mr. Dugan has already indicated an interest in volunteering here with our community, specifically his interest in joining our Economic Development Commission, he's been to a couple of our meetings already, and no doubt his expertise would help us develop effective strategies to revitalize key properties in our three commercial quarters. And with that, I'd like to invite Jim up to accept the award, and please join us in recognizing our June Business of the Month, Strength Inc.
To the City of Forest Park Business of the Month, Strength Inc., in recognition of the company's contribution to the growth and development of the City of Forest Park. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, if I could have a word, please?
I just want to express thanks for this honor and this recognition, and I hope we can be a light in the community forever and a day. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, sir. Comments? Next item on the agenda is anniversary, like the first of which is the 30th anniversary, Assistant Administrative Secretary, Joanne Lee. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Forest Park, Ohio recognizes Joanne Lee for 35 years of outstanding dedication and loyal service to the City of Forest Park, 1979 to 2014, 2015, 2024, and so forth.
(laughing). Congratulations. Thank you. I'll keep this short, because I'm not real big on speeches, but I just want to say I've really enjoyed working here, and it really makes a difference when you work with a lot of great people, and you have a great boss, and you really enjoy what you do. And I would have never thought 35 years ago that I would have had a career like I have in government, but I really enjoy it, and believe it or not, one day I will not be here, and enjoying retirement, I'll be the next thing, but for now, I probably plan on working a few more years, and, you know, enjoying what I do, and just be happy to have a job for as long as I have, because many people today, they don't even have a job 10 years, let alone 35, so I just want to say thanks, and I really enjoy it being here.
Thanks, Joanne.
(applause).
The next award, Mike. Forest Park, Ohio recognizes Mike Rube for 25 years of outstanding dedication and loyal service to the City of Forest Park, 1989 to 2014 plus. Michael.
Thank you. Mayor. 25 years? I don't have 35 like Joanne, but believe it or not, I think we graduated high school the same year. But anyways, I can't say much tonight, except that we have one of our guys that's in a hospital, his name's Jim Smith, he's our Fire Marshal. He is making a recovery, and it's been a long 10 days for him. Today, we got him to least acknowledge us and talk to us a little bit, he's on the road to recovery, and I think the prayer change through the fire service and the city and all the employees has worked wonders. Jim, we hope will come back to work someday, because his office is across Maya Hall, and when I look across that hall and I see that door closed, I don't like it. Anytime one of our people gets sick, it's not good. But I've never had a day I didn't enjoy coming to work, and I love this job. We have great people, like Joanne said, our city manager and the mayor has given us support and the council, and we're going to continue on like we have been, and keep on moving forward. This is a great organization we have here, we're working hard to keep it going, and thank you very much. If I get three to five more, I'll be real happy, but we'll see.
Thanks, Mike.
Alright, thanks.
Alright.
Comments from the council? David.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank both of you for years of investing, not just your career, but your life, with this organization. And I know both of you well, Joanne a little bit better, because she started about the time I think Kathy did, and grew through the city. And since you both started at four or five years old, it's amazing how you've grown through the years. But again, it's dedication like you've shown us that makes me proud to be a resident and the other residents of our community. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to both of you, you know, and I kind of believe, Mike, when you said you guys probably graduated together, because you guys have kind of the same spirit, you know, very kind-hearted people, looking to work with people and work for others. And I truly believe that, because I've seen it in you, and, you know, that's why you're successful here, I think, because you really look out for others, and that's what it takes to be a successful government employee, because, you know, some days are not easy, and some days are great, and thank you for being there through the good times and the bad. And I also want to congratulate Strength Inc. as well, and welcome you to the city, and hope to see you for many, many years.
Okay, to both of you, I want to add my thanks from the city and the citizens of Forest Park. You know, we're fortunate to have great employees, we have them throughout all of the departments. It's the employees who make the city what it is, and I know on a personal note that I and the council cannot be successful without the work that you guys do, we appreciate it, and don't ever think that, you know, we may not write you thank you notes every day, but always know that we're very appreciative and we're proud of you for what you do. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smith?
Just a couple of brief points. I fortunately have had the opportunity to work directly with Joanne, and also Mike, and I would encourage any of you, if you have an opportunity and you can locate a picture of Joanne from 30 something years ago, she looks the same.[538.66][538.66](laughing). I don't know how she does it, but she manages to do it. But it's been truly a pleasure working with both Mike and Joanne, and look forward to many, many more years, many, many more years of working with you guys.
I don't think that's good.
(laughing) Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, item four, communications from the public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcriptions, comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address council? Please do. Come over, sign your name, sign in and tell us who you are, and then state your business.
You got a sign-in sheet here?
Should be, I mean, yeah.
Oh, thank you. My name is Thomas B. Dean, I reside at 11339 Kenshire Drive. I've been a citizen of Forest Park for going on about 19, 20 years now, and I was kind of shocked to find out just recently after I had filed my taxes, that you all, back in January 2013, decided to, I guess, look into changing the credits given to individuals that work outside of Forest Park. I am a Cincinnati firefighter, and I already pay Cincinnati 2.1% taxes. The credit that was given to us for 2013 was 1.125% on our total amount of revenue, and we are looking forward to the 2014 of only giving 0.375% credit. I talked to a bunch of individuals throughout Forest Park who work in Cincinnati, and a lot of firefighters who live in Forest Park that work in Cincinnati, and they were unaware of that you all decided in the first of 2013 to pass an ordinance in November of 2013, that you all were going to raise or lower the credits that were given to individuals that work outside of the city. And I talked with them, and I told them I would come here and voice our disbelief and our concern about this kind of action that's being taken. We are voters, and we voted you all in to try to, if you're going to bring revenue into the city, it's not by taxing the citizens, it's by trying to get things going where you got businesses thriving in this city. And taxing the citizens should be your last, last solution, okay? Until you all resource, you know, pull some, I guess, individuals in, hear from, we got this, what's this, this promenade over here, that's half empty, I don't know what we have to do with the Cincinnati mill in terms of businesses being there, we have a strip mall over here on Northland that's just about vacant, you know, we voted y'all in to use, I guess, whatever brains you all have in order to try to bring revenue into the city other than try to tax the citizens more than what they are. I'm already paying Cincinnati 2.1%, and now I find out that I'm going to be paying you all an extra, what, 0.9%? I'm paying 3% city taxes as it is, and some of the other individuals who work in Cincinnati are, you know, aren't very happy about that either. And I'm just, I come here to find out, you know, what are y'all planning on doing? You know, just going to tax us until we can't be taxed anymore? Or you all planning on trying to getting some businesses to come in here to start, you know, to subsidize the revenue for this city?
Well, let's take this all, you know, one at a time. First and foremost, we all have been and will continue to try to bring, to have businesses to locate in Forest Park. We've been doing that for a number of years, but understand, we don't have total control over whether businesses come in or not, and once they end, we don't have any control over whether they stay or not. We provide incentives to bring businesses in, we provide incentives to get businesses to stay. However, we have no control over the economy, you know, those decisions are not made by us. Businesses operate based on what the economy will bear. I will tell you that as far as retention of businesses, we've managed to maintain and retain most of the businesses that we have. Even though the economy was bad, we didn't get hit as hard as a lot of other people, and you're right, taxing the city, taxing the citizens any more than they're already taxed should be and was the last resort. We didn't, I'll correct one thing, so we didn't decide in January of 13 to do that. We voted on that in November. We didn't make a decision in January of 2014 to do this, we looked at a lot of other options. Not only did we look at a lot of other options, when we came to this option, we had several meetings of council to discuss, how could we do this? What was the best way to do it? What was the least impact it was going to have on our citizens? Okay? Secondly, when we decide, before we decided to do this, we publicized and held at least three public hearings where the public was invited to come and give their input into this option. Now, unfortunately, I think a grand total of all three meetings, a grand total of less than 15 people showed up at all three of the meetings combined, and not all of the people who showed up at those meetings voiced a negative objection to this. And one thing that I'd like, you know, I think people need to keep in mind, I understand that you pay taxes in the City of Cincinnati, but the City of Forest Park gets none of that money. Every dollar that you pay to the City of Cincinnati goes for the upkeep and the maintenance of the City of Cincinnati. None of that comes to Forest Park. So if the citizens of Forest Park don't pay for the upkeep of the City of Forest Park, then we only have so many options that we can do, most of which we've already done. Before we, two or three years before we got to this point, we've cut our staff and we've cut services back and forth, we could possibly cut them. If we don't do this, then our only, we only got a few other options. One of those would be to completely cut staff some, again, and we can't afford to do that. Or we can cut services some more, and the citizens don't want us to do that either. See, we don't have in Forest Park, we don't have a GE, we don't have a Procter &amp; Gamble. You know, we're basically a bedroom community, meaning our taxation is primarily, at least this part of taxation, the income tax part, falls on our citizens. So I guess, you know, if the citizens of Forest Park don't want us to provide the services that we're providing to them, then, you know, that's the only other option we have. We don't have any other options.
Okay, you said that you had a total of 15 individuals that show up to three meetings. How did you, how did you advertise this concern about the taxes? If it was in the, that little small newspaper, my wife reads it, and she said, she doesn't recall seeing it in there.
It was there.
Okay, well, she said she didn't see it, and I'm quite sure you probably could have came up with something a little better than that little small newspaper.
It was not, you know, it was posted on our board, we are required by law to post notices and announcements of meetings, and we posted them in all of the places that we post and announce every meeting. It was out there.
The meeting probably was out there, but what about the changing of the tax code?
When we post meeting notices, the agenda of the meetings is posted. It was there.
Okay, well, I didn't see it.
I would like to speak, since Chuck Johnson is speaking of "we," I'm not a part of "we." I voted against it, I listened to the residents, I listened to the fact that my husband and I are on social security, working part-time jobs, and it's still tough, and the majority of people that did come to speak to us talked about how it was going to be difficult for them to come up with that kind of money. One gentleman said $1,600 a year, and I thought that was a lot, too. So I'm not a "we," and I voted against it, and I would vote against it again, because that's what the residents needed. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I say something, Chuck?
Please.
Sir, sometimes unfavorable decisions are made for favorable outcome. You're not the only one. I, too, work in the City of Cincinnati, and I am a resident of Forest Park. I was not happy with it, but I had, I had to decide what would I prefer? Would I prefer paying a few extra dollars a year, or would I prefer at 4:00 in the morning, my house catch fire, and we had to lay off the firemen, there's nobody to call? So it's not just you, and it wasn't, it's not a personal thing. We, this was thought out long and hard. Like I said, I wasn't happy for it either, but I'm in the same situation that you're in, and I had to make a decision. I voted for it. I had to make a decision. I put my family first.
Okay, but you're still getting taxes. The only people that are being hammered by that is the individuals who work outside of Cincinnati. You already got, you know, for the 2013, you all gave us a credit of 1.125. I had no problem with that, but all of a sudden for this year, taxes that, when we're going to file taxes in 2015 for the 2014 year, we only going to get 0.375% credit. That is a lot. That's a, that's a, that's just like cutting me off at the knees, saying, okay, well, hey, you don't need your money, we're going to put it towards taxes. And as far as services are concerned, I live on Kenshire, and every time it snows, I've never seen a salt truck or any kind of truck come down that street to clean that street off. It would have to, the snow would have to practically melt before there's an attempt to clean it off. So whatever kind of services y'all are rendering, and other than fire and police and putting up some plants, I haven't seen it.
Well, I will say this in regard to the cleaning of streets, you are the first person in the 14 years or so that I've been on council that I've ever heard complain about snow removal, because I can guarantee you, snow removal and the street cleaning in Forest Park far exceeds anybody else in this area, in this state, period.
And I don't worry about it, I have a four-wheel drive, so if you, if it snows out there, I don't worry, I know I'm going to make it home, I'm going to get in my garage, and I'll be safe, and so will my wife and children, you know. Other people out there, if they don't have four-wheel drives, they're probably slipping and sliding up and down there, you got individuals speeding up and down the street, you know, and you talking about services, I jog in the morning, and half the time I see people driving up and down mills like it's a raceway.
Councilwoman Harvey, you had a comment?
Well, I wanted to kind of give you some background. When this was, when this tax was passed, almost immediately after is when the economy went south. We never, ever raised from this tax, this original tax, what was expected. We made changes, long before other communities around us made changes, to live within our means, and by doing that, we cut out a number of people. We had no property maintenance for probably 14 months, we had no one in that department. We had people in the tax department, and the lines were backed up, phones were not being answered, there were a number of, but we did that in order to stay within our budget. In some areas, we brought some people back to correct some of those dislocations of service to citizens. During this last several years, a reassessment of property took place, and property tax, property valuations went lower, and property taxes suffered as a result of that. In addition, in order to plug state holes in their budgets, over time, assistance to local governments has been cut off. And so we've gotten hammered from the economy, from the devaluation of property, from the local government fund going down. In the middle of last year, when the finance department was doing a routine checkup, they said, if we continue at the rate we are going, we are going to come up a million point four behind where we had anticipated revenues and expenditures to be. We have to make corrections. We looked at a lot of things, and we were told at that time, every single, number one, we won't fill any vacancies that occur in the city, number two, every department that has one, has two or more people in it, will have to have at least one person cut out of it. We haven't done anything on our streets, except through grants, for eight years. And that kills me, because when our public utilities director, public facilities director came on, the city was in bad shape, and he got it onto a system where your roads were repaired anywhere between five to seven years. We haven't done that, and it's getting further and further and further behind. We put off capital improvements. So we're faced with this, how do we plug a $1.4 million shortfall? We've pulled in our belts, we got $400,000 out, if we had taken from our savings the other million, we would probably be bankrupt right now. What do we do? Do we make those kinds of massive cuts? Or do we raise taxes? Sometimes the easy vote is to do what people want. Nobody wants their taxes raised. It's easy to say, we won't raise your taxes, we'll just get by as we can, but then you get cut services, and the next thing you know, you've got businesses moving out of the community, you've got the people that can pay and go someplace else vacating, and you get in this downward spiral. You have to do something. And so for me, although it's not popular, you're faced with an unpopular decision either way you go, raising taxes or cutting services. For me, it was do what is necessary to plug this hole, to provide these services, and continue to provide these services to people in this community. And what's more, we said at that time, we have to make other decisions at this point in time, because we're going to be back in the same thing in probably another year. We're trying to get revenue in here, I thank Paul, Paul has done a fantastic job, but to get the kind of revenue, we would have to move in at least five businesses as large as Union Central to plug that kind of a financial hole. Like the mayor says from time to time, we don't make widgets, we don't sell things to make a profit, we have to get that from either the people in the community, property taxes, income taxes. We have to rely on you to provide you the services that you need.
Okay.
I chose what I thought was the right decision. It's not a popular decision, but if I had to do it again, I would do it.
We're going to be at this all night, and I have grandkids that are in town. I have left my email address. I care to see some of the, you know, y'all said you all, you tighten your belts, and you were out looking for individuals and stuff, I would like to see just who you all talked to, you know? Who you all talked to, even to try to get to come in here. I don't know if y'all go out to see if you can find companies to come in here, or what. So I left my email address, and email me, I'm curious to see just who you all did decide to come in here.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Lives?
Oh, just a quick comment, and I won't lengthen it. I've got grandkids at home tonight, too, so I want to escape, but we do see businesses regularly, constantly, the gentlemen sitting there. Every month, every meeting, we have a Economic Development Commission, we've made, we have some tonight that are getting incentives to come to our community. I, as much as anybody sitting here, don't like to vote for taxes and organizations that are anti that, but we were faced, we were up against the wall at that point, and as you said, you want police and fire protection, we all do, and we were faced with major, major layoffs, and we're just praying the economy turns around, so we aren't faced with that. But I appreciate you coming and expressing it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else down there?
I would just like to make one final comment, and, you know, when we did, not only did we have the public hearings, the council met in special section and work sessions over the summer last year, when we were supposed to be on recess, wrestling with this problem, trying to come up with a solution, because there are no good solutions, we knew that going in, but we sat and we talked and we discussed, and when I, I will correct myself at this point, up until the evening of the vote, we met as "we." Now, everybody on this body is, has a right to vote as he or she sees fit, but as, the thing that did not happen in those meetings that we held in the summer is, nobody offered a different solution. And as Councilwoman Holt said, it's easy to do the most popular thing, but it's not easy to do the thing that we know that people are going to consider, you know, are not going to like. And if, you know, if I'm going to take the easy way out, then I should offer some solution other than that easy way out.
But it is an easy way out, raise taxes.
No, it's not the easiest way out, because if that were the easy way out, we would have raised taxes, we haven't raised, we haven't raised an operating tax in this city since 1985. But that would have been the easy way.
1985. But that would've been the easy way out. But we didn't do it that way. Any other comments? And Sheila, I want to apologize for you for including you in the we.
Thank you. Don't do it again.
Well, I won't do it again, because you had every opportunity in every one of those meetings to offer a different solution than where we went. Not one time in any meeting that we held, did you say, not only did you not offer a solution, but at no time did you say, I don't think we should do that. At no time did you make any effort or attempt to persuade any of the rest of us that this was not the right way to go.
I'm gonna do what you wanna do.
No, it's not a matter of doing what we wanna do. It's a matter of, it's very easy for you to sit up, it's very easy for you to sit up here now and say, I wasn't part of we. You had a chance to be part of we. You chose not to be a part of we, and you still choosing not to be a part of we. You took the easy way out.
Thank you so much, Daddy.
I ain't your daddy. Don't wanna be. Move on to the next item of reports. Item number five, reports of standing committees. First of those is the Law Committee, Councilwoman Cottle.
No, and no.
Anybody have any questions for Councilwoman Cottle? I have no items on the agenda for the work session on the 23rd. Do you have any to add? Next report is the Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report tonight, thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you for the next meeting. Uh, I think you do have one vacancy coming up on, um, Economic Development, okay? Next, our committee report is Public Safety Committee, Mr. Lives.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to report that in the Police Division Department, Chief Phil Cannon, Lieutenant Jeff Larch and Bill Arns attended the Ohio State Highway Patrol Academy on June 2nd. We have three recruits currently going through that school, and they have been carefully following them. They've been doing excellent. They actually, they panned it, panned it, passed the physical fitness test perfectly. So we're looking forward to these three graduating on June 27th. Also officially Captain Gary Terrell officially retired on May 30th, and we've got two new appointed captains, Bill Arns and Lieutenant Jim Ward were promoted. Uh, in the Fire Division, as you heard tonight, our concern and prayers are with Jim Smith. Unfortunately, he's certainly still at the hospital, and underwent some surgery, so we did want to report on him that he's doing okay, better, and we certainly make our prayers and wishes to him and his family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Councilman Lives? Mr. Lives, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session. Do you have any to add?
Not at this time, sir, thank you.
Next committee report is Public Improvement and Facilities, Mr. Southall.
Uh, I do not have a report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Southall, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
Not at this time, thank you.
Next committee report is Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Uh, no report at this time. I do want to mention that, that, uh, Mr. Bram and I will be going to the Tax Incentive Review Committee, uh, meeting tomorrow, where all of our enterprises and, um, uh, tax incentive financing arrangements will be reviewed by, um, the county, uh, group that does that, so I have a report when that is over.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none, Councilwoman Herbie, you have three agenda items for the work session, reappropriations ordinance, the 2014 tax budget, and the Novell software contract. Do you have any to add?
Uh, no, sir.
Next report is Community Development, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have no report for Community Development. However, just want to remind all council members, on Thursday, the 19th, we're scheduled to meet with the School Board, or a portion of the School Board, at the, uh, at the Superintendent's Office, starting at 6:30. If you have any items that you want to, um, discuss during that meeting, I would ask, maybe if you send that to Sally, and she can forward that to me, and I'd be glad to, uh, send that on to the School Board. Uh, and also, Ty, I guess in, 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 uh, Ray's place, I would ask that maybe you and Paul follow up with Mr. Dean, and maybe give him a history of information from the Economic Development or the appropriate source that can be shared if it's not already made public. I mean, you know, he, he made a pretty, I think, a reasonable request to provide the historical information. So I think we owe it to him to at least give him that information. Um, you know, I don't know what he's gonna do with it, but it's information that's available to the public anyway, so.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Burns, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
No, thank you.
Uh, I'll go back up to, uh, Ways and Means, just one correction. I should say, I believe the 2015 tax budget, isn't it? Or is it this year's?
Uh, no, it would be, it should be, should be 2015.
Well, that's what it said, 15. It says on, on, on my sheet, it said 14, but it's 15. Okay, uh, next report would be Intergovernmental Relations and Communication. That would be my committee. I have no report. I won't answer any questions if there are any. I have no items on the agenda for the next meeting, for that, uh, for the work session. Next item on the agenda is the Mayor's Report. Um, I have just two items to report. First, um, we've had, we received a, a request, um, from a group, an African group, to, uh, regarding their Kente Festival, which is August 28, 29, and 30. It would be held at Wesleyan Methodist Church on, uh, Kemper Road. Uh, this is, it's three nights, and the sessions are 6:00 PM to midnight. Uh, they're inviting any council members who wish to attend to pull, to do so. Uh, there will be a proclamation presented to them at this, uh, at their festival on the Saturday night, uh, as it was last year. The next item that I have would be, um, we will have two, we had a request for two special council meetings. The first of these council meetings will be, uh, the first one will be on Monday, this coming Monday, June the 23rd, following the work session, uh, because we need to formally vote on a multi-year contract for Novell Software. Uh, Roberts in the process of negotiating a multi-year contract, which would save the city some money. However, the current license expires at the end of June, and council will not meet again prior to, uh, until July 7, so we need to do that before that time. Also, the Finance Department would like to have a special council meeting on Monday, July 14, immediately following the council work session, to formally vote on the 2015 tax budget. So make sure you mark your calendars. On the 23rd of June, following the work session, we'll have a, uh, special council meeting with the one item. And on Monday, July 14, immediately following the work session, we will have a, a second special council meeting for the 2015 tax budget. And that would end my report. I would answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is the City Manager's Report, Mr. Smith.
Two things. One is to let you know that the department reports are on file in the Clerk's Office, uh, if anyone, for public inspection. Uh, the second thing I want to just let everyone know is that we had our initial meeting with Home Depot, um, and the project that they're going to work with the city on doing. Tomorrow, we will have our, not tomorrow, excuse me, Wednesday, we'll have our initial walkthrough of our various facilities, uh, to get a better detail on exactly what the improvements are at Home Depot and their, its foundation. I think it's called the Homer Foundation or something. Um, you'll get a better idea of what in-depth improvements they're gonna assist us in making. Uh, and the initial meeting we had last week, they were indicating some of the things, such as things like the, um, the tennis court. Uh, they do not have an expertise in doing those kinds of things, but they would be willing to, um, help with the cost of the materials or pay for materials, however that works out best for us, um, on that project. And then also looking at, uh, Founder's Park, which is over in the corner of Sharon and Waycross. That's another one where they weren't really sure exactly what they could do, but when we do the walkthrough, we'll get a better handle, a better idea of exactly, uh, what we want to have done and what they're able to do at that point. Uh, so again, that will be Wednesday. We're starting at 10 o'clock. If anyone wants to stop in and join us with the walkthrough, that'd be perfectly fine. Um, and my final piece, actually, there were three pieces. So my final point would be on Friday at 11:30, we're actually having the employee recognition lunch for Joanne and Mike over at the Senior Center at 11:30. So if you happen to be available, want to stop in, please feel free to do so. Thank you, and that'll conclude my report.
Any questions for the City Manager's Report? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Smith. Next item on the agenda, item number eight, is other reports. The first of those would be the Law Director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the last meeting, I believe you have received a sample of a parental responsibility ordinance for future consideration, also an opinion regarding referendum and talking to Sally Huffman this, uh, this evening. Uh, I did some additional research, just to let you all know, 731.29 requires a referendum to be submitted within 30 days of passage. Also, you will be receiving a recommended ordinance change regarding our leash law. We have, right now, one particular person that refuses to comply, and we're having to cite him on multiple occasions. As our code currently reads, that's a minor misdemeanor, even if this person does it 10 times in a week. So I've suggested a change, that if you have multiple offenses, in my suggested change, within 30 days, it will be considered a third-degree misdemeanor, to put a little more meat on the bone of this enforcement opportunity. But that doesn't have to be 30 days. We, council could change that to any time period. As an example, it could be more than one occasion within six months, even within a year or so. Uh, when you do see that, keep that in mind, that 30 days was just a suggestion, but based on what staff might recommend, it can be a bigger time period. So that is the end of my report, unless there are any questions.
Any question for the Law Director?
Can it be less than the 30 days, or does it have to be at least 30?
But the problem, the person we're dealing with, um, he's had three offenses since October, so you get these offenses that are spread out over time. So if you make it, say, a week, it's gonna be a minor misdemeanor every time. That's why you might want to consider 90 days or even six months.
All right, thank you.
Any other question for the Law Director? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Next item B, on the other reports of the Clerk of Council, Mrs. Huffman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that Resolutions Number 09-2014 and 10-2014 were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Any question for a Clerk of Council? Hearing none, thank you. Uh, next item, item number nine. Uh, before that, we have a motion, Mr. Lives.
Yes, sir, thank you. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the second time by title only, Ordinance 05-2014. This ordinance was read for the first time by title only on June 2nd, 2014.
Second. It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the second time by title only, Ordinance Number 05-2014. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, with the Clerk call the roll under motion. Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson? Yes. Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes, yes.
Motion to suspend the rule passes 7-0. Next item is item A under Unfinished Business, uh, Ordinance Number 05-2014. Would the Clerk please read that ordinance by title only?
Ordinance Number 05-2014, an ordinance enacting revisions to Chapter 152 Building Code of the Cultified Ordinances of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, to add Section 152.25M to address the disposition of personal property on the premises of unsafe structures to be demolished by the city, and to make other minor changes and corrections.
Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, I move for the adoption of Ordinance 05-2014.
Second.
It's moved in second that we adopt Ordinance Number 05-2014. Is there a discussion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, this code amendment was recommended by staff to address the fact that once people are properly notified that, that they have an ownership or an interest in a, in a property that the city has condemned and scheduled for demolition, then they have the responsibility to remove all contents, including the contents within the garage, uh, as well. Otherwise, they will forfeit the contents and, and may still be held responsible for its disposal. Uh, this code amendment will put more legal substance into our code for requiring people to remove the contents of their property, otherwise they would forfeit a claim on that property. It also clarifies in the case of a vehicle, that the city would, may cause it to be, um, towed from the property, basically as a, an abandoned vehicle, and the owner would be, would have to pay for the storage and towing fees to recover the vehicle. And with that, I would urge adoption and passage of Ordinance 05-2014.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, with the Clerk call the roll under ordinance. Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson? Yes. Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 05-2014 passes 7-0. Next item is, is item number 10, New Business. Is there a motion, Mr. Lives?
Yes, sir, thank you. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read Resolutions Number 11-2014 through 17-2014 by title only. These resolutions were posted six days prior to our meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read Resolutions 11-2014 through 17-2014 by title only. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, with the Clerk call the roll under motion. Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson? Yes. Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0, so we will suspend the rules. Next item on the agenda is item A, Resolution Number 11-2014. Would the Clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution Number 11-2014, a resolution consenting to the execution of a redevelopment incentive agreement between Q Laboratories and the City of Forest Park, Ohio.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of the Resolution Number 11-2014.
Second.
It's moved in second that we adopt Resolution 11-2014. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, um, this motion, or this, uh, resolution would authorize the city manager to be able to enter into, um, an economic development agreement, an incentive agreement with Q Laboratories, um, to invest, um, $15 million, uh, in, um, the city and build on what is the site of the old Kmart on, uh, the corner of, um, um, Waycross and, and Hamilton. Um, what they would do is build a $50,000, $50,000 square foot research laboratory that would bring in 55 full-time and 38 part-time jobs to the community initially, and their plan is to create another 19 full-time jobs and nine part-time jobs over the next three years. I would urge, essentially what we would be doing is, um, providing them with the land at a, um, a reasonable price, but in, with an incentive, we would actually be giving them sort of a discounted price on that, and also to do a number of other things, assist them in getting, uh, accepted as an enterprise zone, um, and, uh, a number of other things, helping them, um, get through the building codes and, and agreements quickly and exp, to expedite that. So I would urge adoption of this, uh, resolution.
Further discussion, Mr. Smith?
I would just bring to your attention that, uh, this is one of those projects that actually will generate some revenue, uh, actually for the city. Uh, and it would be our recommendation that, uh, again, the revenues that generate actually goes, initially goes toward offsetting the debt, the debt for that project. Uh, as you may recall, that was part of the purchase, um, the property was purchased for the Kmart section. So we still have some debt that's outstanding that we need to pay for. So the revenues that's generated for this, it would be our recommendation that the first priority for that revenue coming through is to pay down that debt.
Any further discussion? Questions? Mr. Burns?
Yeah, actually, um, just to piggyback on what, um, Mr. Smith said, I'm glad that staff has decided that, based on the discussions that we've had, uh, and, you know, because it is important that those debts go down as our, as our as our, as our income rises. We have to service that. And I just want to make sure I'm hearing and clarifying. What we're really saying is, we're discounting a piece of property. And, let me finish my point. We're discounting a piece of property as an incentive for this business. And that incentive package really is no extension of funds from the general fund of the city, correct?
Correct. Right. Essentially, if we, if we were to sell it at a discount, that depresses the market for the surrounding communities in terms of. So what we're doing is basically, we're selling them, to them, for a fair market price, but there's going to be an exchange done so that eventually, essentially, they're getting it at a discounted price. But the sale price will be at a fair market value.
Right. And I just want to make sure our citizens understand the incentive that we're putting out is a discounted sale of a piece of property and not a depletion of the city's funds, which is important, I think.
Great, any further discussion? Hearing none, with the clerk caller roll, please.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Sethaw?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is Item B, Resolution 12-2014. Would the clerk please read that resolution by Title Only?
Resolution Number 12-2014, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract between the City of Forest Park and the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated Supervisors.
Is there a motion, Mr. Lives?
Thank you. I move for passage of Resolution Number 12-2014.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 12-2014. Is there a discussion, Mr. Lives?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This boiled down to the fact-finding process with the police bargaining units. And fortunately, through the work of the city and the police department, it came down to a single issue of insurance. This one issue based primarily on the new healthcare laws. And both sides have accepted the fact-finder's report. And it covers, again, primarily the insurance issue. This report and this resolution would cover the period from January 1, 2014, to December 31, 2016. And it was incorporated in the salary budget. Thank you.
Any further discussions? Hearing none, with the clerk caller roll on Resolution 12-2014.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Sethaw?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Resolution 12-2014 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is Item C, Resolution 13-2014. Would the clerk please call the most, call the roll on that resolu, I'm sorry, would the clerk read that resolution by Title Only?
Resolution Number 13-2014, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract between the City of Forest Park and the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated Police Officers.
Is there a motion, Mr. Lives?
Thank you. Yes, I move for passage of Resolution Number 13-2014.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt Resolution Number 13-2014. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Lives?
This is almost identical to the Resolution 12-2014, which covered the supervisors. This is the same issue for the police officers. And again, it was the fact-finding report that was accepted by both the city and the police officers. And it runs through that same time period as the previous resolution. I would ask for passage, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 13-2014?
Lives?
Yes.
Sethaw?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Resolution 13-2014 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is Item D, Resolution 14-2014. Would the clerk please read that resolution by Title Only?
Resolution Number 14-2014, amending the resolution setting rates of pay for civil and non-civil service employees.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move adoption of Resolution Number 14-2014.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt Resolution Number 14-2014. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, routinely, we do this. Anytime we enter into a new labor contract with any of our employees, we have to adopt a resolution setting the rates of pay. And that's what this would do. The rate adjustment is approximately 1.75% increase, which is reasonably competitive in this market and is within our budget and consistent with the general increases that we provide to other employees. And so I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution Number 14-2014?
Sethaw?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Resolution 14-2014 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda would be Resolution Number 15-2014. Would the clerk please call the, would the clerk please read that resolution by Title Only?
Resolution Number 15-2014, a resolution declaring a moratorium on use and occupancy, applications and permits for child daycare services type A, family daycare, type A family daycare homes and religious organizations, and directing city administration to evaluate current city codes regarding such.
Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, I move for passage of Resolution Number 15-2014.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt Resolution Number 15-2014. Is there a discussion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, staff is recommending a moratorium for six months on the current allowances, allowance of churches and daycare centers going on to, into shopping and office centers. Currently, they're seeing this type of use in a manner that is in conflict with the intended use of certain business centers and may serve to destabilize the economic balance of the land uses within, within our community. Really, simply put, they just need a pause to really study this issue. You know, to make sure the, all the codes are being upheld as well as the safety and well-being of the people who are in those facilities. And with that, I would urge the passage of Resolution 15-2014.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call the roll on Resolution 15-2014?
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
No.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Sethaw?
Yes.
Resolution passes 6-1. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 16-2014. Would the clerk please read that resolution by Title Only?
Resolution Number 16-2014, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement of cooperation with Hamilton County, Ohio pursuant to provisions of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended.
Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, I move for the passage of Resolution 16-2014.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 16-2014. Is there a discussion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, this is a corp, a corporation agreement that we must complete every three years in order to continue the participation of the Community Development Block Grant Program. The program is designed to provide assistance to local communities for projects that benefit the people in low to moderate income. Basically, the agreement requires us to pledge that, as a community, there is no illegal discrimination and fair treatment, as well as the fair treatment for all citizens. And with that, I would urge the passage of Resolution 16-2014.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call the roll on 16-2014?
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Sethaw?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Resolution 16-2014 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda, Item G, Resolution Number 17-2014. Would the clerk please read this resolution by Title Only?
Resolution Number 17-2014, a resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Forest Park and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners relative to the improvement of Northland Boulevard.
Is there a motion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, I move for the passage of Resolution Number 17-2014.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 17-2014. Is there a discussion, Mr. Burns?
As part of the, as part of the Northland streetscape and road paving project, we applied to receive, and have received, a $50,000 grant from the Hamilton County Municipal Road Fund. This fund is to assist the, to assist cities and villages to maintain and upgrade roads within their jurisdiction that are part of the road network that facilitate travel within the county. The $50,000 grant will provide for engineering and design costs for the resurfacing of the streets, of the streets from Waycross to the east of the city limit, to the, to the east of the city limit. The grant also serves, the grant also serves as part of our matching fund for an $871,000 paving grant that we, that we were awarded by the state of Ohio. This resolution authorized the city, the city manager to execute an agreement with the county and laying out the terms of this grant. And with that, I would urge the adoption of Resolution 17-2014.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call the roll on Resolution 17-2014?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Sethaw?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Resolution 17-2014 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda, Item H, is a motion, Councilwoman Holt?
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Dominique Samari